I have a call to order, a work session of the Planning Commission. I don't think we need roll call or anything, right? Good to go. So tonight, we just have a work session tonight to go over a couple of items, but I see we have a large audience. I don't know if you all have something you'd like to address to the Planning Commission, or if you're just here to observe. But we do offer public comment at the beginning of the meeting. So if you do have something you needed to share, would like to share, you're welcome to do that now. Otherwise, just welcome and we'll get started. All right?
All right, so agenda item two. We have Allison James here from our Parks Department, and she's going to give you an update on a trailhead project that's coming on McAsland. So, okay, thanks.
Hi, good evening. That item before you is this Shan Shan Chu parcel, which is approximately six and a half acres. It's on the west side of McAsland, just south of here, about a third of a mile. It's bordered to the west by two county open spaces. Aaron Arsenal, which is owned by Boulder County and the city of Boulder jointly, and by Mahoffer, which is specifically owned by Boulder County. In 2014, this parcel was purchased by Superior for $680,000, and part of which was a Boulder County contribution of $125,800 in return for a conservation easement. The easement protects the property's conservation values in perpetuity while still allowing recreational uses. Following the purchase, the property was rezoned to the Open Space and Natural Uses District. This project for the trailhead came about to address community concerns over existing trail access at Third Avenue and Depot Street in Original Town. And as the use of metal lark trail has increased over the years, some of the items that the public and that came up for this project was the volume of on-street parking at Third Avenue by the trail users, and it occasionally blocks residents and emergency vehicles from navigating the street. Also, Rocky Mountain Fire District had had some concerns about their ability to navigate fire truck when users are on both sides of the street and parked to use the trail. And the trailhead with connection to the trail was a priority by OSAC and Prostag since 2014 and was submitted for the County Open Space Annual Request since 2015. In August of last year, staff and OSAC members presented the trailhead item to the County Parks and Open Space Committee for Boulder County. And there was a back and forth on the plan for compliance with what Boulder County wanted. In December, the Board of County Commissioners approved the project and had to make an amendment to the Marshall Superior Colton Trail Corridor Management Plan. Also, since the Aaron Arsenal property is covered by jointly-owned Open Space Management IGA that required the county to give the city of Boulder information about the change on the management plan and all questions the city had were addressed, and they had no concerns. Boulder County Parks and Open Space conducted staff site visits, had no concerns as long as the project is constructed in accordance with the submitted and approved plans. And this is the plan that was submitted. It has 27 parking spaces. It has a drainage along a historic, no longer utilized ditch. It has a cattle guard. This is the existing barbed wire fence for, you know, because cattle graze in that area, so there's a cattle guard here. It has a sidewalk connection to the new existing sidewalk on the west side of McAsland. This year is the baseline phase of just the parking lot. And the board asked that OSAC come up with some small, medium, and large options for additional amenities for the trailhead. And staff will present this to the board as a budget option for next year and ask Planning Commission to weigh in. And currently, this plan is out for bid, and the due date is May 9. And it's combined with the Colton Road Rehabilitation Project.
Allison, could you go back to the map and maybe point out where, yeah, mouse over kind of where this is?
It's right here in this flat area. It was really the only good spot to place it. And it was really close to this elbow in the trail. And the connection to the trail from the parking lot is approximately 45 feet.
And there'd be an entrance onto McAsland, did it? Was that?
Correct.
So it'd just be a right-in, right-out?
Yes.
And it looks like maybe 20 parking spaces or so?
27.
27, okay. Any comments?
Is, I guess, the town-owned parking lot? Well, it will be a town-owned.
It will be maintained.
Is the town planning to charge for non-county residents who are parking in it, like the city slash county does at other parking lots?
No, not that I'm aware of. I don't think we charge for Colton Trailhead either.
Anybody else have any thoughts? Good idea? Seems important, so thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Allison. All right. So, agenda item three is just the opportunity for Planning Commission discussion on the work session you guys had on April 18. So I didn't know if you guys wanted to discuss that, or debrief that meeting, or, you know, discuss how we move forward, or, you know, anything on that discussion. So I just put it on there for, since we didn't really get a follow-up otherwise. And I guess you might want to update the folks that weren't here as to, you know, the direction you got.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we quite received direction at this point. I think we're still waiting on what direction's going to be. So there was clearly not a favor in moving forward with an overlay district. So that's, but we haven't been given direction that we wouldn't do that. It just seems to be that's what, I mean, that was just a planning. I mean, it was just a kind of a dinner with the board. So we haven't gotten official direction at this point.
Okay.
Right, so.
Um, I mean.
There seemed to be interest in accessory dwelling units.
There seemed to be interest in incentives and accessory dwelling units, so.
Yep. But not, not formal and not.
Not required, yeah.
Not required. So that's, that, that's what came up.
That was the only feedback from that whole work plan?
No, there was some, I mean, there was a, there was a work plan that there was a, my recollection is, I looked to see if we actually had the final version.
Yeah, do you have the draft first?
I do, I don't have the control.
I amended the work plan slightly.
Yeah.
And I looked to see if there was a final version available online, but as far as I could tell, there isn't.
You know, it's. It's one of the agenda items for next week's town board meeting on the 13th for them to, I just had that up. But they are on consent to approve your work plan per the changes that you guys discussed on the 18th. So I don't think anything's different, but we can pull it up if you want to. But yeah, among the, item, item C for next week's town board meeting is approval of Planning Commission's work plan. So I assume that's in your file, Phyllis, is that correct?
Yes, and I am looking for that on here, but I am not.
I don't think that, is that agenda being distributed yet?
That agenda?
PC, oh, it's item D, 3D. And I'll bring up the redline version, I guess, we can see, so. Right now, I'd probably better bring up the straight one.
3D?
It was item D, I think it was, confirmed.
So that's the final version, and I think there's actually a redline version too, but we can go through the final version if you want, or if you want me to look for the redline version, I can do that too.
It still reads potential land use code amendments related to Northwest Superior Planning Recommendations Review and Comment on Ordinances Related to Chapter 16, so.
Yep.
But I don't know what exactly is, what they're expecting with potential land use code amendments.
So I think that, I mean, that's really kind of the basis for the discussion, and you and Anthony were both there, and Lisa was there too. And from what I understand, she might still be joining us tonight. But I guess I heard that there was some confusion over what an overlay district was. So some folks felt that that was a no-go. Some felt that they needed a better understanding of it. But more unanimously, you guys got some direction that everybody was generally supportive of incentives to achieve, you know, some of the same objectives that might have been sought through the overlay regulations. And then regarding the Superior Marketplace, I think that everyone feels that, you know, further communication, I guess, with Bricksmore and players like CDOT and whatnot are probably the next steps before we get too far down the line with anything further on those recommendations. But I think the sentiment was that everyone's generally supportive of the marketplace kind of directions and items within that planning effort, so.
There was also discussion of reaching out to Lafayette, and I'm not sure whether.
Yes, can you roll it so that, sorry, there's items nine and 10 on there as well, actually?
Yeah.
Do you want to enlarge, or can you see it okay? It wasn't a joke, but I will enlarge it.
I'll take it enlarged.
So we'll start at the top, and then we'll scroll down when you're ready. But yeah, so if you guys want to attend next week to comment or be available to answer any questions that might come up on your work plan, that's on the agenda for the town board meeting next week. And if you want to have any discussion or follow-up about where we go from here, if you want to discuss what incentives would look like, the direction, at least we got generally from some of our board members was that we probably needed to be doing this without Clarion, so it would be, you know, staff-driven and still, I mean, our staff-led and then still driven by Planning Commission. So that's kind of what I'm looking for, you know, some sense from you as to whether or not you want staff to work on something, or if you feel like, you know, because they certainly talked about being supportive of accessory dwelling units. And then I thought that they talked about being supportive of incentive-based.
Yeah, yeah, and I'd like to better understand what incentive-based, what that would look like. I mean, if it doesn't end up in code, does it?
Yeah, and I think that that's why that this section of the code is written as it is, because it would potentially require land use amendments still, but it wouldn't require property owners to necessarily abide by them. It would have to be incentive-based. So I guess as an example, you know, something off the top of my head, let's see. You know, if they wanted to have a reduced front setback and, you know, and not build in Original Town to 25-foot, 25-foot front setback, we could allow them to have, you know, a 15-foot front setback as long as they incorporated a front porch and, you know, maybe a roof pitch or something like that. So there are, we have means to kind of, but it would be more of a give-and-take situation as I see it. So, you know, instead of having to abide by certain parameters, you'd get some leniency in exchange for some architectural elements. You know, because right now, you could have a box out there and not have any architectural features on it, so.
Do you feel comfortable that you can help us work through those ideas and get the amendments worded, or?
Yeah, I mean, I am, I'm happy to do it if that's what you guys want to do. I think it would require us working together on it and then setting up some work sessions. But I think that I could, you know, put some parameters in place for you guys to, you know, respond to, and then see whether or not that's.
Same with accessory dwelling units, I assume?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be, you know, kind of, we'd probably not reinvent the wheel. We'd probably look to other jurisdictions and see what they've done. And then, you know, we'd go back to Planning Commission first to see whether or not those parameters felt appropriate, or whether or not we needed to, you know, make some changes to make them more specific to Original Town. But, you know, certain regulations, certain places require, you know, water and sewer for those accessory dwelling units, which makes, kind of discourages them from being put in, because there's, you know, tens of thousands of dollar tap fees associated with new water and sewer services. I didn't get the sense that that's the direction we wanted to go. But then there's other provisions that we'd want to discuss, because I think that, you know, if it was, you know, a landowner that didn't live there and wanted just a second unit, to have a second unit, then, you know, some jurisdictions require home, like that person, to live either in the accessory dwelling unit or in the primary residence in order to ensure that. I mean, I think that there's just kind of the same mentality when you have like a VRBO or something like that, that you can rent out a room, but you can't rent out your whole house because you're not there to, you know, monitor whether or not there's impacts on your neighbors.
A room above the garage, or a small apartment with a garage.
Right, yeah.
Being handled differently than set, maybe building a mother-in-law-type building that would be housed independently. They may have different regulations and different requirements.
Yeah, so we could walk through like just what those, I mean, it would take some research before we could have, you know, certain meetings. But I think that, I guess, in my mind, we have, we had Clarion go like pretty far down the road with this, and it wouldn't take a ton more to flesh the rest of, or at least some of that stuff out. But we do need a transition from regulations to incentives, which I think is a little bit more nuanced than just saying you have to do something. We have to figure out where the, where the give is in order to.
And then can we, so right now, modifications to existing homes who are grandfathered in, you know, like our home being whatever it is, 16 or 17 feet from the road, right? We can't technically build a porch, right, without Clarion's. Can we address that in code as well to allow some of these older homes that are?
Yeah, no, you could, I mean, you could either try to draft the regulations in order to address everybody, like, you know, like whether or not it's existing, or whether or not it's a new build, or you could try to draft them specifically to address, you know, certain allowances for, you know, existing structures and certain allowances for new builds, you know, so.
Sweet, and can we make that official, or is it more of a?
It would have to be, I mean, the way, the way that, the direction, yeah, right, right.
It would be doing additions outside of the, and the porch is really the best example I can give, but there are situations where, I mean, a long Colbrake Drive where people are so close to the road.
Yeah, and I think that at a certain point, that staff may not feel like it's supportable, you know, because I think you need a minimum setback from a right-of-way just to have safe, you know, vision sightlines and whatnot, so.
But we could probably define that.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I don't think that, I mean, and you want certain, I mean, so I think for the front setback thing is the thing that comes to mind as the biggest give we have, because it's a fairly, you know, steep front setback, 25 feet. You could, you could push that up to, you know, 15 feet or 10 feet as long as you're not having a garage off that front yard. So once you need a garage and a driveway, then you need 18 feet, you know, in order to park a car there without overhanging into the right-of-way or something like that, so. But those are all, you know, regulations that I'm pretty familiar with, you know?
Okay.
So. And I think Lisa will be a pretty, you know, good asset on that end, too. I don't know that, I know that she's done research. She mentioned after the meeting that she did research for accessory dwelling units when she was in Wheat Ridge, so, you know, that's something maybe we can work off of, so.
So being cognizant of your time, how realistic is it for us to think that we can approach this and address all the needs that we have, particularly in Original Town, and setbacks and code changes and all of those types of things that is associated with that? Are you have, do you have enough staff time for that? Or are you going to need additional staff time for that?
I would need additional staff time, but I mean, I think that some of that gets worked out in, in through these work sessions, which I'm available for, you know? We haven't, I mean, so it's a matter of we fit them in when we don't have, you know, development review meetings, or if we have a shorter development review meeting, we stay an extra hour to work, you know, on it. And I don't know that we'll have a, I think we'll have to be strategic, you know? How do you want to tackle this? Do you want to look at ADUs first? Do you want to look at, you know, actual development regulations for, you know, new builds? And, you know, or anybody, how do we want to handle it? And I think that maybe we just need a work session to set those parameters first and then kind of work our way back to, you know, what do we want to focus on to begin with? But it's more of a, you know, do you guys still have the appetite for this? Do you want to try to see this through more, I mean, individually? Because I don't, it doesn't seem like Clarion's going to be a part of, you know, getting these things across the finish line, so to speak.
And has that come other than from one board member?
That's a good question, so, that's the sense I guess I got. Yeah, I mean, you can go and try to get that direction, but that would be probably, you know, one of you going to the town board meeting, you know, maybe next week you can.
Sounds like you've taken direction. I mean, just by the way you're speaking to it, that direction has been assumed.
That's what I heard at that meeting. I mean, I didn't hear anybody contradict it, but.
Yeah, and that's, well, yeah, that's where I struggle with.
No, I.
Where does direction come from? And is it one board member, and therefore it's done, or?
No, it's a good question, it's a good question.
So that might be worth us bringing up. Because we get, we get bits and pieces from a single board member who seems to be opinionated about something, and I have no idea whether the rest of the board didn't weigh in one way or the other as to whether they were opposed to Clarion or not, so.
Okay.
And there was also a direction given, I mean, if we're talking about one person suggesting things, the other thing that was suggested is that we look closely at Lafayette and how they implemented their district and their overlay district and how that went. Was that given to anybody at staff level to do that?
I mean, no, not formally. So I think that this is still kind of considered a Planning Commission-driven project, and so that's why I set it up for, to get direction from you. And no, I mean, I don't think I can go out and do anything necessarily without some more direction from either you. And I think that maybe you sound like you may need some additional direction from the board or clarification from the board.
Yeah, possibly. I mean, that was brought up at that meeting, too, was to just look at what Lafayette has done and how that has gone and how they implemented it, what they did.
Could that be just a simple request for a presentation from the planner of Lafayette about their overlay district?
We could see, we could see whether or not it's viable. I mean, yeah, I don't know whether or not they might, certainly worth asking, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Do you know the planner there that you could reach out?
I don't, but it wouldn't be hard to. I mean, that's not a place I'm familiar with somebody, but.
Well, option two would be, you know, just looking at what the, what the result was.
Okay.
And I think Clarion did that, correct? I think they were involved in that.
They were, yeah.
If I recall, so that might be another reason to see if we can gauge Clarion for a little bit longer to find out what that, how that district was done and how it's doing.
For myself, I need significantly more clarification about what direction the board wants us to take. I thought that it was pretty clear. My interpretation was that we needed to either table this, put this on hold, or wait until they could, the board could make a decision on whether or not to move forward with this. I have always said I don't want to just spin our wills here in doing a project that's just busy work. I feel, I feel like we need to be able to know that what we're doing and what we're moving forward with is going to have some impact, or that it will have some teeth to have our town board move forward with what, what we've been doing. So that was my interpretation of that. I also feel like we need to have some way to have a better open line of communication with our town board, and that we need to be able to communicate with them our progress, our setbacks, what we're working on, kind of on a more regular basis, and have time that's dedicated to us. And I don't know how we do that, but I think that that would be a real important piece for myself in moving forward with this.
I have a different opinion on that. I think there is ample room for observation, communication, reviewing of minutes and meetings. And I think it's a request to the board to actually do it. I don't know that we can create much more than what's already there.
I think it was pretty clear, Bob, that that wasn't happening.
Oh, it's clearly not happening, but I don't want to go do something new that's not going to happen, right? I mean, I don't, it's like every avenue of communication is wide open for everybody to observe, to read, to watch. I mean, I don't know what we do. I don't know whether we, I mean, we, I don't know, throw an agenda item on for 20 minutes every meeting and request direct feedback from the board as an agenda item? I mean, that's the only other thing I can think to get them to do, but.
Yes, yeah.
But if they're not reading and they're not watching the meetings and they're not paying attention to what we're doing, then that piece won't work well, because there won't be, they won't have the information necessary to converse about it. And that's, I mean, and I am frustrated with that, just like you. I think we're exactly the same place, I just don't know what to do.
And, you know, I don't, I don't know what the answer is and how to make that happen, but one of the things that I brought up in our joint session was that we need to be able to somehow have an audience with the board to update them particularly and specifically about the work that we're doing here and what's happening with some of the projects that we have going on and why we're making some of the decisions that we're making in our meetings. I think until we get that, there is going to be that opportunity to put the Planning Commission items on the shelf or get back to that at another time, or, you know, not view or listen to the videos or look at the meeting minutes. So until we get something that's concrete and where we have their full attention, we're going to continue to struggle with this as a commission.
I agree. So next steps?
Well, I think that if, I mean, I guess the two that occur to me is that, you know, one, we can have a kind of a new kickoff meeting that, you know, kind of. we can have a kind of a, a new kickoff meeting that, you know, kind of talks about where we go from here as planning commission, maybe as a, as a work session. But first, if you guys want to clarify direction that you got from the town board, you're more than welcome to go to their meeting next week. And, I mean, you have your work session as an agenda item. You can show up and clarify that you're there to answer any questions on that work session and that you'd like clarification on whether or not, you know, they, you have their blessing to do X, Y, and Z. I think it might be a little bit more constructive, I guess, if you had, you know, something specific for them to respond to. I think it's a little harder question to say, what do you want us to do? And then a little bit more, maybe too open-ended, but if you have a suggestion as to, you know, we plan on working on, you know, regulations for accessory dwelling units, and we hope to bring, bring them back to you, you know, in the fall, or whatever the case may be, you know, so.
And do you think that's part of the work plan agenda item and a modification of the work plan?
I think that's, whatever you do this year is part of your work plan, and I don't know that it's a modification. I think it's, you know, within number four here, you know, that's potential land use code amendments related to the Northwest Superior planning recommendations, so.
And I guess I kind of sit with Anthony. If, here, if we, if we don't get specific direction and are told to do it, I mean, are we spinning our wheels, right?
Right, but I think that's a question you gotta ask them, yeah.
Is more specificity in the planning work plan the place for this, or?
I don't know that you need to amend the work plan. I just think that before you go too far with that bullet, you, it sounds like you want clarification as to what they think that looks like, you know, or what they're comfortable with that looking like.
David?
If, if we're going to talk about accessory dwelling units and things like that and focus on original town, I can't see when we're going to get to about nine out of 10 of the items we've got on this list. I mean, it's just a misleading, and half of them are so generic that they're not really very, give you very good direction anyway. I mean, if you go down to eight, nine, and 10, really, are we really gonna review the traffic flow through Superior to improve the res- what the hell are we gonna do there? And who is gonna do it? And if we're not gonna do it, why don't we just cross it off? Likewise, the actively engage in regional planning with adjacent jurisdictions? Who's gonna do that? And if we're not gonna do it, why is it on there? We're really gonna create diversity in the four housing options, including attainable housing options? I don't see that, or at least not from us. So, I, I mean, having listened to the town board last week and looked at this again, I mean, I don't think this is actually, I wouldn't call this a plan. I'd call this a dream.
You said, Stephen, that you have the redline version as well. Can we peek at that?
Uh, I think I do. Let me see.
It's on the, it's on the site, or it's on the website as well.
So that's what was changed through those meetings, or through the April 18th meeting? I will enlarge it real quick, and then let me know when you're ready to scroll down.
Well, and yeah, six, which is not scratched out, so let's continue to collaborate with town board. I don't know what that means. It's, everything else was scratched out, that was left, but that's not on the final, so.
So essentially, all the action has been taken out of our work plan, it looks like, a great deal of it. And that, that's where I, I think, where some confusion is created for me. It's like, okay, so there are no, you know, we can't recommend anything, but we can suggest, or we can review, which I understand is, is our role as a planning commission, but it really does take any, any teeth out of what we are able to do or recommend to our board. And that's, that's, that's a little bit confusing to me and the part that I really don't understand, so.
So I agree.
There's a disconnect, yeah. There's a disconnect for me there.
So I agree with all your comments, but I guess I'm kind of a person who, if someone didn't tell me no, that's implicit, implicit yes until told no. And so like, you're right, they weakened the language, but they didn't say not to do some of the stuff that I think we've talked about doing. So absent a firm no, why not work through that, make a recommendation and the board can tell us no, but.
Well, I'm, I'm open to some, some, there are some areas I'm comfortable with that. I mean, they've, they've made clear that they're, that they're interested in looking more closely at accessory dwelling units. They're, they're open to providing incentives. They're open to allowing homes that were built in, under land use codes. I don't even know if there was land use code, that, that, that they would be more lenient in, in some of the things that, that would be permitted to be done for some of the older homes. So those could be the low-hanging fruit to maybe test that idea. And we could start that at the town board, or at, at this upcoming meeting by just saying, look, these are three items that there was agreement on. Can we get official yes or no on them, I guess? And otherwise, you're moving forward at the risk of, which is what we did, but we spent a year and a half on it, and that was a frustrating result to a considerable amount of work. And it was a board change that caused it, because the prior board was very interested in getting it done, so.
Yeah, I, I think I'm in alignment with you guys that going forth and putting a lot of effort and stuff again, when they don't seem to give us any direction and turn us down, I, it seems like a lot of wasted effort. And, and I'm not opposed to, I, I, I'm like you, I just go ahead until someone tells me no. But we've been told no so many times and turned down, that it just seems like unless we do, I like how you summarized it, let's go in there with three things and say, here's what we did. We probably erred, and, and I'm probably agreeing with you, in the work plan. We laid out 12 things that it's just too much to do in, in a year. There's no way we could, we should have been more specific, maybe. So again, I'm not saying it's right.
Well, honestly, I don't think they have a problem with all the other stuff on the work plan. I think their only problem was the Northwest area.
Yeah, I personally, if I was there, wouldn't envision much of it getting done.
Yeah, yeah.
But I agree, we can take that off.
I, I like your idea of just having three things, and we do it, and then we go back to them again in another two months when we're done with those three things, or, and we continue to almost auto approve, or advance, approve in advance what we're gonna do, instead of, even though we think we do that, maybe it needs to be more specific.
Well, why don't we just prioritize?
I, I, I'd like to say, I don't think that the last 18 months has been wasted. I mean, we may not have got the board to agree with the provisional proposal on original town, but frankly, as I've thought about it, I think the proposal was overreaching. And I also think that the work that was done on the marketplace is actually quite good. I, I mean, that's there. I mean, we know what, who we have to talk to. We have ideas about what it ought to look like. I, I, I would actually like to figure out if there's some, find out if there's some way that we can help move that process forward. I mean, that's sort of got pushed back on, I think, as part of the overall.
I don't think that got pushed back on. I, I think that, that, that they, they want staff to continue conversations on moving forward. I don't, I don't think there's any doubt that that had, that the marketplace is gonna have to adapt and change.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I would like, I mean, the, the critical thing there was that this should go to staff to see if they could move that forward, and my question would be, okay, is there anything we can do to help make it move it forward?
Not yet, yeah, and I, I didn't.
But you're prejudging that.
Sort of. I mean, without Brixmore on board and without, I mean, we've got to have Brixmore on board. I really, I mean, I think that's what it boils down to, and without, without, I, without that, there's not a whole lot we can do, and that's sort of a staff responsibility, so, but, but yes, I agree.
Is there any way we can help staff to do that, you know?
Yeah.
People we could talk to, or people we should ask to come and talk to us, or, I mean, I, I, I don't know what the answer to that question is, which is why it's a question, huh? I mean, my question really is, what could we do, if anything, to help move that, or help the town board or staff move that process forward, since we've been involved with it for the last 18 months anyway? I mean, I, I think that's actually more significant than whether we have accessory dwelling units in original town, frankly.
So do you want me to come up with a list of items for them to, and I don't, I don't know how we do that. I don't know if we tack it on as an amendment to the work plan, or... The last thing I want is some verbal meeting giving us direction. That's, I mean, I'm not comfortable with that. I, with, I mean, at this point, I think, until we get a vote from the town, from the board with official direction, I'm kind of with you on that. I'm, I don't, I don't want to burn energy unless we have official direction, right? Which that, and we did, actually, with this, we had official direction, but, and so that doesn't even, that doesn't even necessarily mean that it's gonna happen, so.
Right, well, and maybe we learn a lesson a little bit, too.
Yeah.
That when the board, when it changes, we probably have to reaffirm what our plan is with.
Yeah, well, yeah, change within, you know, we have two, two or three months.
Right, no, I agree, yeah.
It was just about done, so, yeah.
Well, as I look at this list, I mean, one, two, three, and five are basic items of any planning commission, I think.
Yeah.
Right, so there's some of the stuffs, we're gonna keep doing it, and it'll happen almost every meeting.
Yeah, I think one through five is, that's exactly, it's six through 10 that are sort of the more of the project-based type work. There seemed to be interest in the comprehensive plan. I'm, I'm struggling with that because I, I, there's not a whole lot left in town, and we kind of went through this when we started looking at Northwest Superior, and they, this, this is the only area that's really left that needs comprehensive plan direction, I think. I, I don't know, but everything else, either under development, we have the Richmond property, or the, what are they, what are we calling that now, the?
Town 15 or whatever, yeah.
Town 15, that's sitting down there that, you know, maybe, maybe it needs looked at. There are only a couple of parcels left, but, so, but, but there, there was expressed interest in reviewing the comprehensive plan at that last meeting, so.
Well, it's supposed to be updated every five years. Is that just a, I mean, where does that come from? Is that a?
Best practice.
Best practices.
Be the way it is. There's nothing official. Yeah.
The last one was 2012, so.
Right.
I mean, even if, even if the update said there's nothing left to plan, huh, at least you'd have the update, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then, you know, I agree with number eight. I, I, I don't, I, that's a, that's a huge project in and of itself, and I wouldn't even want to be, I, I mean, I would vote to strike that off our plan if, if, are you guys okay with that?
That'd be the one I'd love to do.
If I recommend striking number eight off the plan.
I struggle with, like, what's our role versus, it's a, there's a transportation and safety committee, right?
There is, yeah.
It sounds like that's, that's for them, and then we might review what their work, you know, as an interim staff.
I think it's, as it becomes important for, you know, marketplace, if we get involved in that, and certainly it becomes a part of that project, but independent of, of everything, I, yeah.
I don't know that you look at it independently. I just think you need to be cognizant of all of these items as you're reviewing any application, you know, like, so.
Oh, agreed, but I mean, that's a separate line item to do something about. It feels, I mean, and we could put, as relates to projects, you know, presented to the planning commission, we will look at blah, 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 right? We'll, we'll look at these things. I, but I don't know that that's a work plan item per se, right?
Or maybe we, we leave it.
I don't recall a county card.
Or, or maybe we leave it, and when we find out that we're not allowed, or that we're not gonna be able to take on a couple of the other items that are in our work plan, it'll give us something to do that we might actually be able to have an impact on.
I mean, and that's something that one could look at through the comprehensive plan update, too, so.
And maybe we could recommend we bullet that under comprehensive plan review or something. And if we get to the comprehensive plan, if that's their priority, then, then we do, so. And then, as, the, the regional planning with adjacent jurisdictions, that came up, and I wish Lisa were here, she, she's very interested in doing that. It's just understanding what each of the, our adjacent communities are doing, so it's not really about actively pursuing any action. It's, it's maintaining an awareness of what's, of, of what our neighboring jurisdictions are doing. And, you know, for example, the Storage Tech property, I caught rumor, somebody said, I don't know if it has been, somebody said there was a contract on it, or it was being, I mean, I, you know, but if that were to happen, right, then, you know, we want to be paying attention to that and how it's gonna impact us and what benefits or, and or, you know, drawbacks, and, and just be paying attention, I think, is mostly what number nine is about, so.
It's a good thing to discuss, you know, whenever we wrap up a meeting, too, just whether or not there's been any updates, or whether or not anyone's heard anything about. I mean, if you could get on their update list, you could sign up for Louisville's or Lafayette's or Boomfield's, and, and then it could be just awareness, you know, just as much as anything else.
And we even had, I think we even had a joint meeting with them a couple times over the last 10 years.
Apparently, yeah, historically, that, that happened with planning commissions.
It makes sense to do something, because of the old Sam's Club property, where there's now apparently ideas, or at least ideas in play.
Oh, yeah.
How those would be redeveloped.
Yeah, there's, there's.
I mean, whatever they do there is going to impact both the marketplace and our new downtown, so, I mean, it does make sense to be involved in that.
And I go to their state-of-the-city address. I mean, I've been, I've been doing that the last five years and trying to watch what they're doing, and, and that is one of the things that's on the table right now, so.
You know, one question I have is if anyone else would find it helpful for our town attorney to come in and talk to us about what we actually can and cannot do in terms of our code, any more talk about overlay, you know, things like that, cleaning up our, cleaning up our codes and our, um, our, our residential districts and their, and those things, you know, I, I would find it helpful, because that was alluded to in that meeting as well. An attorney said, we cannot do this, or the attorney said that there might be an issue with that and, in regards to our overlay district, and I think it would be good to, you know, just know what's, what's possible and what's not.
Well, I think Mark Lysus was asking, I mean, he was the person who wanted to have that discussion or that information from the town attorney, wasn't he? So if he gets it, maybe they can share it with us.
It's an enormous discussion, because it has to do a lot with the risk that a town's willing to take. Government's allowed to change code. I mean, government's allowed to do a lot of stuff. They might get sued by, by private property owners for doing it, right? That's, that's, that's one of the risks of doing it. And, you know, the idea of doing it well so that you don't, you know, that you create enough positive to, you know, offset the negative, and, and you, and we have, we have a relatively, I, I mean, this is my opinion, but we have a relatively conservative legal firm. They, you know, we're, this, they're, going after those kind of changes is not something they're gonna jump on without really good reasons, so, you know, it, it's, I, it, you, I'd love to, I would love to know what you're legally, you know, allowed to do, you know, but, and I'd like to understand the risks of what it means to do those, right? And so, but we, I, whether it's worth the town spending money with our attorney to, to figure all that out and have a conversation with us, I don't know, but, I mean, I'm, I'm more interested, what are you allowed to do and what do you not want to do because the risk is too high, right? And what is the risk factor of doing one thing versus another, right? And, and are you willing to take the risk in order to make something that you think is really important happen or not, so.
And who would know that better than our attorney?
Oh, yeah, but we have to pay them to, to have that conversation with us. And we'd have to find out if they're willing to, to go as far as telling us. I mean, I, and I've asked that, I've, I've.
Considering what we just spent with Clarion, I think it would be a drop in the bucket.
Yeah, maybe.
To have that happen.
I mean, I'm willing to ask. That's, that's, I, I can put that on the request, too, for.
Just to go, it'd be very helpful.
Generally, I have the opinion that more information is better than less.
And then the last item, the affordable housing, so that's, that's come up a lot. There are a lot of people interested in this. We're the only, I think we're the only city in the county that.
There are three.
Are there three cities, three towns?
Us, Jamestown, and one other. It's probably somewhere like Ward, actually.
Yeah, but don't address it. And, and I'm concerned about, I mean, I have some concerns about how the board is thinking about it. I'm not interested in making Northwest Superior the affordable housing district of Superior. I'm, I'm much more interested in seeing the affordable housing, you know, be, I mean, we have affordable housing here now. I mean, it's, it's, I, there's probably nothing more affordable in Boulder County than there is in Old Town. But if we're gonna put programs in place, then, then it should be town-wide, right? And the, and the counties have figured. And, and the counties have figured out how to do that, and, and affordable housing doesn't necessarily mean the $500 a month housing. It, I mean, it, it addresses everything from low income up to, up to middle income, right? And sizable families who need, need larger homes, and the county's been doing a great job of figuring that out and diversifying the communities so that, you know, there's a lot of different homes available, so. I'd like to, I'd like to look into, continue to look into what the, what Boulder County's doing and see if we can participate in how that might look, so. That's, that's my interest, so. All right, I think I have the, I mean, is that with, that, so, maybe a quick recap, then I'll suggest that we get some clarification, however we do that, whether they want it in the plan or not, in our, in our work plan, to get specific about overlay districts, I'm sorry, not overlay district, the, um...
Incentives?
Accessory dwelling units, incentives. Specific to this area, what direction we want to go with Northwest Superior, and what involvement we, they want us to have, or whether that's staff direction or not.
Well, I'm not sure that, I mean, I don't think asking the board plan out questions like that is going to produce very helpful answers.
If you have another way to approach it, I'm all ears, but short of asking them and getting approval.
I mean, I think we need to have positive suggestions to make that are likely to be, more likely to be well received than rejected, huh?
I think I'm only suggesting the things that they brought up in the, in the meeting.
There's a sort of sales job in here if we want to do, if we want to be effective.
I'm open to suggestions. If you want to share them with me post-meeting, that's cool. At this point, I'm... Yeah, I, I'm sort of addressing the board at a, at a meeting and getting their direction. I'm not quite sure what to do. I, you know, I have my individual meetings with board members from time to time, so I understand what they're thinking, but... And that's something all of us can and should do, right, so that we know what they're thinking and where they want to go, so. And then I was going to, I'll just knock off, I'll get some clarity on number seven, the comprehensive plan. I think we request we take off number eight.
I don't think we agreed on that.
On number eight?
Yeah.
Oh, or make it as part of the comprehensive plan.
I kind of, kind of thought you could do the same with affordable housing. Like, if, if, if we don't really need to do a whole comp plan for the, the town looking at land use, I mean, it could just be focused on efficiencies or, you know, hot topics. One's transportation, one's affordable housing.
Yeah, if we don't have consensus, I'll probably request that we just leave them on here, so. And I'll just, I'll just request changes to places we have consensus, so. So then, do I have consensus on the, I guess it would be, what number is that? Number... No, I think number four is just our general, I think that stays in the work plan, right? That's just generally paying attention to cleanup items and land use. I think number six, Northwest Superior, is just the items, the accessory dwelling units and the incentive-based changes that we might want to make to the code, right? And see if we have direction, clear direction from them. And then I'd also like to tack on that, that we provide staff direction to look more closely at Lafayette, and I'll try to get clarity on whether Clarion is, is really out because one person said so, or is, is everybody else on board with that, with that, too? Because we know they actually did that, so it would be, they would be probably the, the best choice for giving us an update if they, we want to.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know what number six means.
Number six just says continue to collaborate with the town board on Northwest Superior.
Yeah, I know what it says, but I'm sure not what it means.
And I'm suggesting, I'm, I'm suggesting we add two things to that. Do you want us to look into?
ADUs.
ADUs and incentive-based changes. I want specificity on that. I, I agree with you, Anthony. I don't think it can sit there like that. I, I don't know what it means to sit there like that, so I wanted to get some clarity. You're going to suggest two things.
You remove that bullet and replace it with what you're suggesting?
I, I, I don't mind continuing to, you know, I, I, I don't mind that being the last bullet item on there. We're going to look at accessory dwelling units. We're going to look at incentive-based changes to our code, and we'll continue to collaborate with the town board on, on, on other items that make sense for the Northwest area. You know, including the marketplace and everything else, I mean, I... But what collaborate with the town board means, I don't quite know either. I wouldn't mind getting some clarification on that.
Right.
I don't know how you're making action.
Therefore, asking them what they mean by that, and, yeah, I think, I don't, I don't think any one of us put that there, so.
Yeah, neither do I.
I think that was put there by them because they didn't like what we put there.
Therefore, needs clarified, right, so.
You can turn that into what Commissioner Witty was kind of suggesting earlier, and, and, you know, bite off ADUs or bite off, you know, the, the incentives to zoning regulations or whatever, and then, you know, continue to come back and present, you know, more bite-sized pieces to them, you know, rather than come back with ADUs and, you know, whatever incentives, or, you know, kind of do one thing at a time to make sure that they're, it's getting the attention and explanation that it needs, and then you move on to the next task or whatever, if that's how you want to approach it. I think that's not a bad idea.
Two houses on Second Street, just south of Coal Creek, actually look pretty reasonable kinds of houses for that lot, but they're not built out to the maximum, as far as I can tell, or?
I haven't done a calculation on the maximum. I doubt they are, but they did all that voluntarily after coming in and talking to staff, so.
So, I mean, this, this was just the...
But that was also a product of, I mean, the fact that I had, I mean, I could have told them what I want, but I don't have, that's not my, that's not my mentality. That's not my job, but I got to tell them what you guys have talked about over the last year and a half, and what, you know, what we've heard from the community about what they want and what, you know, architecture and how to fit in and stuff, and so. That's a good example of what you guys have done over the last year and a half not being fruitless. But they came in and they voluntarily did it, and, you know, we told them what we were looking for, and it's not, at this point, at the price point for original town, I mean, they're kind of going that direction anyway. They're, those are both offered for $800,000 or something, or $790,000, so, you know. And that's, they're also trying to tie in with what's going to be going across the street, and that's all going to be voluntarily done, too, you know, but we've had conversations with them, and I have more parameters to give to developers in terms of what we're looking for, but they would also love to be able to hear that, like, well, I'm going to put a front porch in. Am I putting a front porch in at five feet deep, and then my setbacks now effectively 30 feet from my living space? That doesn't make sense, you know, like, so that's where the incentives that, you know, we could work into something like this would be, would be helpful, and we can actually get some variation, because otherwise you're going to have a wall of development that starts at 25 feet, you know, and there's no, no. And that's not consistent with what's in original town right now, so.
And that's really good to hear. I mean, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm frustrated that we can't put some of these things into our, our code, but, you know, if people are being responsible and responsive and listening to what the town wants and is...
We're not going to always get it.
The same thing, and suggestions you can always ask.
And it's nice to have something to tell them in terms of what we've discussed, you know, so.
No, it's good to hear, so that's the next best thing, so.
Depending on the size of the development, like the one of all the Creek neighborhoods, I mean, that, that would be a much nicer development if they make some variation in it, so it's not, as you say, everybody's going 25 foot set back.
Right.
Looking at it.
Yeah, and that's one of the things, I mean...
I mean, it's, it's, it's good for them as well as for us, basically.
And if we put it into incentives, that means the town has discussed it and approved that we are willing to do that. I mean, if we can put those into code, right, so if we...
Right, and the sooner we put those into code...
Yeah, this, yeah, then, then if they want to come in, at least they know they can, so they're not faced with having to put a line of homes at, at 25 feet behind, right? If we don't mind some of them being at 15, and some of them being at 25, and some being at, I mean...
Right, or if we prefer that, yeah.
Or if we prefer that, right, to just, to make it look, make it look a little more interesting, right, so. And style differences, too, you know, I mean, even encouraging, you know, not, I mean, not, a lot of towns regulate it, but I mean, again, incentive-based, you know, not building the same home, same model, the same home right next to each other or across the street, or, I mean, Boomfield's got that. I mean, they're very strict about, about, and it makes their neighborhoods look better, you know. I mean, they're, they're still single developer neighborhoods, but they, they look better, you know, they, they just, you know, you don't, you don't get the same style home.
But that's also something to be mindful of. I mean, the sooner one could put into some sort of incentive place, or incentives in place for development, we might still have some impact in Rogers Farm.
And who knows? We get it all set up, and it's also maybe another board will want to make it more official. But it'll be too late by then, so.
I mean, the good thing would be to get, get what you want down on paper, so you can pass that information along in a coherent way to anybody who actually needs or wants to use it.
And you have some great ideas on just the massing on the side of a home, right? I mean, how do we avoid that? And it would, it would be kind of cool if we could, you know, put our desires in a nonofficial way, if there's a method for doing that, so.
Yeah, I mean, and you go through the work plan that, or the document that Clarion put together, and they starting to comp, you know, contemplate those things, so it's just a matter of, I mean, it was a little easier for them to just write regulations. It's a little harder to incentivize them. You have to have something you're willing, you're able to give, and so.
Or even, I mean, like you said, they just, they looked at our desires.
Right, this is what our preferences are, whatever, yeah.
If, if there's a way to phrase it without incentive, I mean, it's still...
That's the best way.
Right, I mean, if we can present, you know, our design, I mean, maybe they're, and guidelines, I think we called them, right? They're not even official land rights, right? I don't know if you can call them guidelines, but something. I mean, they call them guidelines over here, and they change them all the time, you know, based on what comes forward, so.
Vision, vision, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, if we can, if we can get that stuff into a document that's presented to people who are coming in to build, then...
Yeah.
And that's just a step closer, which I think is, would be...
It's true.
Is everybody pulled, taking that approach for a bit? I'm good with seeing if we can take it off chunk by chunk, but...
So you will put that in as two items on number six?
I'll have to pull together something. I'll get it, Stephen.
This is what's on the board's agenda, so.
Yeah, we can't change this, so.
It's going to be a discussion, yeah.
We can make a request, and I could probably, I don't know how we'd go about doing it, but maybe we, we take this document, we modify it.
Or you just ask for, I mean, you may get verbal clarification. You may not get a, you know, an updated document, but any, you're, you're asking for anything at this point. Either, you know, like, they could make an amendment, you know, and then approve this as it's been amended, if they wish to, or they could just give you verbal clarification as to...
Or we could put it off for two weeks. I want a little more than verbal, but if they need to put it off for a couple of weeks to give us something other than verbal, right? I don't, I don't think we want verbal. I think I want, like, a vote, at least, on, on...
Right, no, I get it.
Direction we're going to go.
Right, so you could ask, then you'll want to be direct and ask for, you know, specific amendment to number six in order to get better clarification on whatever two or three items that you're, you're presenting to them.
And if they don't want to give us that, they want to approve it like this, then I think we need to get pretty stern on, nothing's going to happen without direction, and if they don't want anything to happen, then we'll either have to get the, the, the community to push to get it on the agenda to be dealt with, or let it go, one of the other.
I mean, yeah, this might be semantics, but it's the 29, 2019 work plan, and it's May, you know, and we're still talking about what we're going to do in 2019, so.
Agreed. Well, we didn't have a 2018 plan, right, did we?
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't.
Okay, it showed 27.
Are you saying we should start working on the 2018?
I, I thought it occurred to me, yes, or, or strike the year and just be like, you know, our work plan going.
The new year really starts in September, right, or what's it, October 1st?
No, it's 2000, it's in January, January, calendar year, yeah.
2019 and a half.
We typically adopted, I mean, for the first couple of years I was here, there was hardly any changes. We had, you know... So you guys are looking at it more carefully and trying to be more strategic, and you guys are different in, in the sense that you took on the Northwest area effort, but that was something you guys identified as a need, and, you know, added that to your work plan, but that took three months or four months to get adopted last year, so. You guys are now taking even longer. Congratulations. No, but, but it, it's better than just having, like, the same thing on, on your work plan every year, and it kind of just, you know, going through the motion, which is what had happened the first two years, you know, where we had wayfinding, you know, where we made no traction.
Yeah.
I think I presented it, and then, but that's, you know, that's the other context and all this. I'll try to keep up as much as I can, but we are going to be heavy in development applications in the next six months, too, so, but I'm happy to do it.
And if we, if, if we do want to move forward with some of these things, I mean, it sounds like you could use help, right?
I can always use help.
Okay.
I mean, I got all sorts of problems.
That sort of came up a little bit, right? Yeah, I mean, if we're going to spend that money with Clarion, the other approach is, I mean, heck, you can get a planner for less than we paid Clarion for, you know, you can get a, somebody to help Stephen for less than what we're paying Clarion, and I, I mean, I don't know if I'm, I'm an exception or in the minority, but I, I like the idea of adding, adding staff. I think just having the minds on staff versus outside help, which is very project-specific. When you have somebody on staff, your capacity capabilities change, and you have more knowledge directly available to you, and it's, it's, uh... I don't know, I just think that's a much better way to go, so we can encourage that if people don't object to that.
I, I totally support that. I thought it was just kind of, um, interesting that our town board would offer to give our town staff more work, you know, significantly more work, so.
Yeah.
Without saying and giving direction around, get someone else, get another staff person in here to help with some of this.
What comes off your plate, what's not, what's not a priority to get this one, yeah.
All right.
Anything else? The only other update I guess I'd have is that I'm 50/50 on whether or not we're having a meeting on the 21st. So we were going to bring forward an application, or, I guess I should say, Ranch Capital was going to bring forward an application to construct a portion of the right-of-way for Central Park Circle, and it was just a portion to allow access for the Thrive Development. That's a complicated application, just to break up a right-of-way that's not very long to begin with, so there's been discussion on how we do that, so. Whether or not they come forward with that application on 21st is kind of still being determined. It got sent out for referral, but we may lump it all into one application with Discovery Vertical Development for the adjacent blocks on 26 and 27, so that's, you know, I'll get back to you as soon as I know. I was hoping to know today, so I gave you an update that you weren't coming.
Maybe we plan on, on, at least, plan on having the meeting as a work session, but, you know, and maybe that depends on what we get back on the work plan and what we get...
Well, even if it is this application, it's a fairly, I mean, it's horizontal. It's a pavement and a handful of utilities, and you're not going to take too much time to look at it, so if you wanted to discuss something else on that meeting, you certainly would have the time.
Okay.
I have a question for you, actually, Steve, just out of curiosity, really. What's happening with the development down off Colton next to the Bell apartment complex?
Oh, um, they've submitted building permits finally, from what I understand, and they submitted their construction drawings, but I don't know that they've closed on the property, so I think that they delayed their close, and that's what's delayed their start on construction, so.
I just noticed that nothing has been happening ever since we approved it.
You're absolutely right, but the town heard anything on Tesla, either, in their internal, any changes?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, they have every, the last I heard is that they have every intent to still be submitting a building permit next month, and, but they were delayed. I think they had a change in their contractor or something like that, or their, whoever's doing their tenant permission sign, so.
Okay.
My understanding is they're still moving forward, moving in, so.
I, I understand that.
Rumors are flying, so.
I, I understand they're trying to raise, or they want to raise another $2.3 billion in capital.
But Elon's going to put in 25 million himself, so he's going to buy 25.
25 cars.
Yeah.
All right, anybody have anything else?
Before we go off?
Oh, we're doing random Q and A. Any, any, any update on when Coal Creek, the Coal Creek Trail between McAsland and 36 is reopening? Right across the street?
Yeah.
It's supposed to be this month, so our, yeah, this month, now, now that we're in the May, I think it'll be two to four weeks, from what I understood, so, yeah.
It's not horrible.
It looks great.
Superior Liquor Park and Lot, but, you know, I'd sure like this, I'm looking, oh, yeah, so's my son. Right, yeah, yeah, why, yeah, he rides to school every day through there.
It looks great, though, and then, I mean, it'll be, it's a 10-foot wide paved trail. It looks, I mean, and now we have, like, all these rock abutments in that creek, and the creek just got realigned, like, so it, it shifted location, and they moved that location to the creek, and I think they're going to start planting, but they also don't want to have trucks going in and out of there doing any work while people are still, you know, so I think it's, that's what I heard from Patrick last week, or earlier this week, so.
Shave a minute or a few off your commute with that paved trail, right?
A couple of curbs, yeah, so.
You don't have to climb up the hill to go downhill.
I mean, it's just where, it's, I always think, like, people, when we, we do detours for cars, we're always so quick to reconnect them, you know, not close the road for very long, but when it's like, I'd like to see those people in my shoes pulling two kids behind me this week out and having to ride through, right across the McAsland intersection to get to downtown Louisville. It's not that fun.
Yep, 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 I hear you. All right, anything else? All good, all right, we're adjourned.